It's 6:30 PM. We're led to call this meeting to order. A meeting of the Eastern Zoning Board of Appeals. I am Ryan Cook, Acting Chair. Members able to vote on this particular hearing for 6:30. To my far right, Mr. Stephen Merlin. To his immediate left, Mr. John Curran. To my right, Secretary or Clerk, Tim McCall. Get it right. And then to my immediate left, Mr. Ed Watson. Mr. McCall, would you please read number 19-5 into the meeting notes?
Sure. Eastern Board of Appeals, holding a public hearing Tuesday, April 23rd, in Eastern Town Hall. Calling Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street Northeastern with the following petition at 6:35. This is a continuation from the last meeting. Variance Craig Dwyer for property located at 250 Foundry Street, Eastern.
You're reading 19-5 or 19-2?
Yeah, 19-5. That's a 6:30.
In the wrong one?
Wrong one. I'm like, continuation.
Okay. I'm off to a bad start.
It's okay.
Bad secretary clerk. All right. Eastern Board of Appeals, holding a town meeting at the Town Hall. Calling a Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street Northeastern. Following petition, variance Raven Realty LLC for property located at 35 Belmont Street, Eastern, Mass. Assessors map 33U, lot 96. Requesting a variance from the Eastern Code, Chapter 35 zoning. Appendix B, dimensional and density regulation. Applicant seeks relief from dimensional requirements to allow the removal of an existing garage and a construction of a five bay garage on the premises. Planning Board had the following comment. How is the existing garage being used and what is the intended use of the proposed garage? They did not recommend. Environmental Planner, not applicable. Building Department recommends. Board of Health recommends with the following comment. As long as the structure is 10 feet from the septic tank and 20 feet from the septic field. DPW, not applicable. Police Department, not applicable. Historical Commission, not applicable. And the Affordable Housing Trust, not applicable.
That's it. Okay. Petitioner present?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is Wayne Matthews, 529 Pearl Street in Brockton. Representing the petitioner. This is Ed Jacobs, who's done the engineering work. This is Mike Ferroni, representative of the petitioner. As you heard, the request, I feel like you don't have the plan in front of you, but I guess you're.
We do. We have.
I have it electronically.
This is a lot containing about 16,500 square feet. Business zone, the corner of Belmont and Kemp Drive. Kemp Drive is a private way. There is an existing garage on the lot which contains about 1,500 square feet. It's been there some time, along with my client on the property. The existing garage is about seven feet from the Westerly Lot Line. Is about 15 or 16 feet from the rear yard setback and is some 30 or so feet from the easterly sideline, which is the private way Kemp Drive. We're requesting to tear down that existing garage, which is pretty dilapidated and really not in our best interest or the garage's best interest to try to renovate it. Replace it with a 15, I'm sorry, with a five bay garage that would contain about 1,800 square feet. It's a little, slightly larger than the existing garage that's there. The hardship involved in this lot, I think if you're looking at the lot, it comes back in a straight line and then zigs to the east. In order to put a garage there, there really is no place to put it without being in non-compliance with either a side yard or a rear yard setback. And again, there's an existing garage there that's now, we're actually lessening the encroachment on the Westerly side. Although we're, on the easterly side, we are looking for a relief. It's about 20 and a half feet from the lot line, which is, requires 25. And the rear yard, again, the new building would be 15 feet, but the existing building is probably 16 or 17 feet from the rear yard line. To point out these adjacent properties, all the properties on the property on the east, the west, and the south, butting this, surrounding this piece are all owned by the same owner or by the same family. They're all controlled by the same individuals. And we feel based on the fact that there's the existing building there, that we're reducing the encroachment, well, not the encroachment, but the lack of the side yard setback on one side, it's kind of a trade-off. You know, we'd like to get rid of that building, that garage, which is used for storage. And the existing, the new garage would be, a couple of the tenants in the building in the front would use it to put their cars in and the rest would be used for storage by my client. And we feel it's an appropriate use of the property and would request the Board to consider approving it. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Merlin, you want to start?
I'll start. Okay. So Wayne, you and I have known each other for a long time. This lawyer's in Brockton. So you said that Kemp Drive is a private way, is that right?
Right.
So who plows Kemp Drive?
I do.
One of the Ferroni family?
Yes.
Okay. What's on the opposite side of Kemp Drive?
The opposite side is another multifamily building that's.
It's an office building.
Real estate office.
Kind of same McGinnis in there.
With a single-family house.
Yeah, real estate.
Okay. Now, as I understand your materials, the circle that I have here is in the middle of the lot. That's the septic system, right?
That's for the septic.
So you can't build on the septic system, right?
Right.
And the bottom of the drawing here is the, well, the proposed garage. And this dark line here is the lot line, is that right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So, and the access is from Kemp Drive into the garage, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the bottom lot here with the heavy line is also the exact same owner as this one. Titles 100% the same?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. And this is where you're looking for 15 feet? Right down here?
Right.
Right, Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Yep, you're nodding, okay. And on this side here, you're looking for a little over 15 feet as well, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, this piece here is owned by the Ferroni family, but in a different way of title. Is that right?
Yes.
Different.
Okay, it's an LLC or something. It's not the exact same title. So hypothetically speaking, if these lots are merged, then this 15 feet here wouldn't even be needed, right? So are or can the lots be merged, which would be the logical question that someone in my position would ask?
Yeah, they talked about that. And they'd rather, you know, they purchased them as separate lots. They'd rather leave them that way, at least for the time being. It's possible down the road, you know, some or all of these lots could be combined. But I don't think they, they don't want to make that commitment at this time. But the 15-foot setback in the rear, I think the existing building is 16 or 17. So it really, you know, we're really not increasing that significantly.
Yeah, but that was a non-conforming, it's a non-conforming use now.
Yep.
So you're asking to fix it into a different, non-conforming use.
Slightly.
Is that right?
Yes.
Just asking. Okay. Somebody else?
All right, Mr. Curran?
I don't have any questions.
I'm all set.
The Board of Health had asked if the structure, really, as long as the structure's 10 foot from the septic tank and 20 foot from the septic field, is that the case right now?
No. And I went and spoke with somebody before we even started this process. I went and spoke with somebody at the Health Department. And they got a variance to put that septic system in as it is now because it's too close to the existing structure. It's six feet away from that. And they have a impervious barrier at the side of the system. So I showed them the plan and what we were thinking of doing. And they said, as long as we stayed the same amount away and extended the impervious barrier, they would not have a problem staying from the plan, approving the plan, if it came in front of them.
Well, that's great. I don't have that in writing.
Well, that's the next step we're going to do if we get this approved, is go in front of that.
Is it necessary to have five garages? Is three fine, which will give you the setbacks that the Board of Health is?
No. Well, we're six feet away from the septic system, no matter what we do.
Right. But how about as far as the tank, the septic tank, the tight tank? Oh, that's for a drainage.
That's for drainage. That's for the water drains.
All right. I see what you're saying.
And I think the reason that they're okay with it being six feet is because that setback is usually because it's a basement. This is just a slab, so the six feet really wouldn't affect, there's no basement underneath that garage.
Can the clerk reread the Board of Health comments?
I can read it.
Okay, that's fine. Somebody.
As long as the structure's 10 feet from the septic tank and 20 feet from the septic field. Mark tail.
So that means he approves that subject to those conditions, right?
And it's recommended as long as.
As long as, okay. Because you were asking.
You've got six.
Right.
Right. And it's existing six right now to the existing garage. So it's the same. When they put that septic system in, they get a variance on the Board of Health for six feet. We're not.
I mean, right now, the garage is 28-foot deep with 24-foot work. Because that'll get you to the 10, if you reduce the depth of the garage. I mean, you'll lose one of those bays on the side. If you had just put one large door in instead of two separate doors, chopped four foot off of it, and now you're 10 foot from the septic field. And I like having a deep garage, but 24-foot's still deep enough for a car.
Well, we'd still need a variance from the Board of Health, correct? Isn't 20 feet from the septic field?
No, it said 10 foot from the septic field, 20 from the tank.
No, 10 feet from the tank and 20.
Oh, 10 foot from the tank, 20 from the field.
Right.
Any intention of connecting to sewer?
Well, if the sewer comes up Belmont Street, that would be what you'd want it to be.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And they stopped the Ovalay district just before my law.
Oh, they did?
Yes. Yeah, if we could hook up the sewer, if we turn the garage the opposite direction, we wouldn't need relief on any of it.
That's all I have. Ed?
It doesn't show where the cars are, I mean, I'd assume the cars would be coming in off of Kemp.
Yes.
And then driving in this way?
Yes.
And then you have floor drains for, like, washing cars or basically? And then you come in straight here, so you can drive over this tank? Is this all paved?
Yes.
Correct, yep. And then that's six feet. And then you're actually backing it up from 7 to 15. So that one's getting better. And then this one's going from about 16 to about 15. So that one's getting a little worse. And then this one is 20. And it wants to be 25. And if you took five feet off of that, then it wouldn't be a big garage. And we don't have the 10 feet. Okay. I'm all set.
Anybody in the public? Don't be shy. All right, nothing from the public. Anybody have any other comments or questions?
Move we close the hearing?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to close the hearing by Mr. Merlin, seconded by Mr. Curran. Any questions? Seeing none. All is in favor? All right, that is unanimous. We're going to continue on to the next portion. If you want to stick around, while we finish that, then we'll deliberate afterwards. All right? Thank you very much.
We voted the end.
Thank you.
All right. So our 6:35 hearing is a continued public hearing. Variance number 19-2 Craig Dwyer. Applicant is seeking relief from dimensional regulations to construct solar parking canopies on the premises for property located at 250 Foundry Street. Just to remind everybody, this is a continued hearing. Myself, Michael Spillane, is sitting on this hearing along with Tim McCall, Stephen Merlin, John Curran, and Ed Watson. Good evening, Mr. Dwyer.
Good evening.
How are you?
Doing well, thanks. Sorry to interrupt.
Good. So I'm just going to.
Anybody to read it in? There is a new comment.
Yeah, so hang on just a second. Actually, why don't you do that while you're setting up? We do have a new correspondence from the Historical Commission that Mr. McCall will read into the record.
The Historical Commission is working with residents along Foundry Street to designate the historically significant Hayward-Pool area as a local historic district. Several area residents of the Commission, and the Commission have reviewed plans and elevation submitted for the proposal, solar canopy installation in the northwest and southeast parking lots of the Southeast and Regional Vocational High School at 250 Foundry Street. At their May 7th public meeting, the Historical Commission voted to request the Zoning Board of Appeals not grant the requested variance to the 100-foot setback requirement for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations under Chapter 235, Section 49 of Eastern Zoning Bylaws for the northwest section of the proposed project opposite the historical resources of the pending said Hayward-Pool Local Historic District. Commission staff understand that subsequent to the May 7th Historical Commission meeting, the Commission's concerns about the impact to historic resources appear to have been met by the project proponents revised plans to move the canopies in the northwest section outside the 100-foot setback area and to better screen the area with a row of tall, native deer-resistant evergreens behind a post and rail fence along the street and several native canopy tree saplings between the row of evergreens in the parking area. Signed Timothy Hurley, Chairman.
So that came from the Historical Commission. It was dated May 9th. So I understand you met with them as well or talked to them at some point?
We did.
Okay.
Met with them on Thursday.
Okay. So rather than going through the whole thing again, why don't you sort of explain this, how you got here, how this works, and what it is that, you know, we're looking at now?
Sure thing. So.
Could you just say who's sitting on?
I did.
You did?
Yes, I did. I read the list. Do you want me to say it again?
No.
Okay.
I have.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Thank you guys for having me back again, and thank you all for attending too. After last meeting, I was seeking a dimensional variance here. You know, just to recap a little bit, this project being located on the ground does fall into Section 235-49 for ground-mounted photovoltaic solar arrays. So the same as a solar farm would be treated. What we've done, our previous setback, we were looking at was 76 feet off the road with the transformers located pretty close to the road. And, you know, maybe with our first plans, we didn't necessarily take into account some of the historical resources we had close by. And listening to some of the concerns from the residents and the Historical Commission as well, we wanted to take our best stab at, you know, refining a design that could still maintain our project size and the economics to the school and, you know, structure the deal as we had from the start, but something that could also, you know, meet some of the concerns that we heard loud and clear during the meeting and, you know, also meet the concerns of the Historical Commission as well. So what we've done here with the revised design that you guys can see, this is really the section in question. I think the bus lot, we don't have any residential abutters down there, and there are wetlands on the other side of the road. This is where we have some homeowners directly across the street and want to be, you know, extra cognizant of that with this portion of the design. What we've done is the panels that you see setback there, the original design, we did have a row of panels here on the road, a row of panels here, and the transformer location here, just about 10 feet off the road. Now, we've actually moved the transformer equipment back to 58 feet and 10 inches off of Foundry Street. We have the decibel ratings of those, similar to a quiet conversation in a restaurant at 56 decibels on the Eaton transformer. We've done some landscaping here per the Historical Commission's suggestion and are also taking into consideration for these revised plans to bring before the planning board to put in, and I apologize, the meeting was just on Thursday, so our designers couldn't get the additional trees in there for this meeting. But we talked about, you know, putting three taller canopy trees here too, since we're well setback on the, and we're on the northern side of the array, so there's no shading involved. So, you know, these are indigenous species as resistant to deer as they can possibly be. We're going to work with Conservation Commission in selecting that, which will, you know, be on the final plan brought before the planning board. But we're talking about three additional trees here to provide a little bit more screening. And additionally, it won't, you know, cast any shade on the panels. The panels themselves are now out of what's needed for a variance on this side. We are 120 feet setback from the road. I'll give you guys another view here, so you can take a look coming up Foundry Street. So the transformers will be over here. Again, the arrays are setback, 120 feet from the road. The transformer location is 58 feet, 10 inches off the road with that chain link slotted fence there. And again, we're talking, the trees we're talking about adding in our final design before the planning board would be three canopy trees that, again, we're going to work with Conservation and picking from the indigenous species list on what might be best suited. Historical Commission thought that that would be a good way to preserve the aesthetic, curb appeal, and maintain what you guys have done with your homes over there. I hope that everyone feels the same. And, you know, open to any feedback the Board has at this time.
And the other thing that you were asked last time was on the decibel level, and I know you mentioned it. So just say it one more time, because I didn't quite, didn't quite get it, so.
Yeah, so it's an Eaton transformer, and the decibel levels are 56 decibels coming off the Eaton pad-mounted transformer. So the lead we have in here, let me take a look. Pardon my tabs for a minute. But this is an acoustics comparative examples, noise levels, everything from jet takeoff, right, to being on, you know, the top floor of an aircraft carrier. Again, it's not an, you've got to remember that decibels aren't in a linear scale, right? So 56 decibels is by no means, you know, a third of standing next to a Boeing 737 while it takes off, right? It's, you know, logarithmic, right? So what we have down here is, and they say that as well in the notes, but you're looking at, you know, basically conversation in a restaurant, office, background music, air conditioning unit at 100 feet. This is all consistent with just above what our transformer is going to produce as far as, you know, any ambient noise. Just below that, you know, at 50 decibels, we have, you know, a quiet suburb, a conversation at home, large electrical transformers at 100 feet. Given where we are, you know, with our current design, you'll see that, again, the actual array, 120-foot setback, the electrical equipment typically on these systems, the electrical equipment which needs to be located closer to the distribution infrastructure, isn't considered for the variance. But to be thorough and, you know, again, to be as transparent as we can with you guys, I wanted to show you the exact setback of the electrical equipment from the road at 58 feet, 10 inches here. That'll be fenced in. We're going to have trees between, trees and fencing cover between the transformers and, you know, the road with the addition of those three trees along this way to try to make it a little prettier, if you will. I don't think that the noise, the noise pollution coming off those transformers is going to be anything noticeable. And, you know, we can certainly provide some other information of, you know, with regards to the decibel levels, but I don't think that, you know, you will likely hear this at all.
And then the last question I had was, we talked briefly about it last time, was the lighting?
Yep.
So if I recall correctly, so this is, this is what you're proposing to have for lighting, and it's going to replace some of the existing taller lighting that's in the parking lot already?
That's correct.
Okay.
So here's an example of a similar canopy layout. It's basically like putting a lampshade on top of an open bulb, right? Right now, you're talking about, you know, because it is, it's casting that light down. So when we're looking at, you know, what we can anticipate here, you know, we brought, this is an example of the lighting that's put beneath canopies like this. When we're looking at our design here, Southeast Votech, the lights are going to be beneath, the lights are going to be beneath the arrays out here and replace the poles that were right here. So between that and the additional foliage that we're putting here, you're not going to get any additional light throw towards the street, but it's still going to be able to keep the lot safe up until operating hours. I believe those hours for the school go off on a timer at 10:00 PM, because that's when the programs shut down currently. We're going to be following the same lighting schedule that the school has in place currently. But they are, that light is going to be cast down, so it's on the cars and, you know, not thrown into the street. These aren't major, these aren't major floodlights. These are LED lights that are meant to light the parking spots and not meant to, you know, illuminate the entire neighborhood or put a bad signal up in the neighborhood. So.
I don't have any more questions. Ed, do you have any questions?
So now you're 120 feet back.
That's correct.
You can pass the setback.
That's correct.
On this, on this corner. The other, the other side is still.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but that means they don't, I mean, this side over here, which is still 77, is the one that we're, that we'd be kind of.
We have to grant a variance or not, if we allow a variance, it's for whatever is outside.
But this one here is already.
But they're not going to just build this, is the issue.
Right.
So, but they've addressed some of the concerns that we've had.
I have no questions.
Okay. Tim?
I think this is, you know, certainly made, this is much better than the first proposal. It's a far better project, in my opinion, so I don't have any other comments. Looks good.
John?
No questions.
Stephen?
None for me.
I'm going to open it up to the, to the public. The only thing I would ask is if you were here last time and you spoke last time, try and contain your comments to the new proposal, not just repeat what was said at the last hearing, because that's already part of the record. We've all heard everything. And obviously, I give great weight to your opinions and the concerns that you have. And, you know, if, if you want to let us know whether or not this addresses those concerns, does not address those concerns, or if you have new concerns. Okay? If anybody wants to talk, again, I just asked that you take the microphone, and you can go back towards the fireplace there. You don't have to stand.
All right. Make sure it's on.
Okay. My only question to you, and I.
And again, just introduce yourself, address. Yes, I believe it is.
My name's Albert Smith, 261 Foundry Street, across from the northern section as we're speaking. I've gone over the plans thoroughly. I've seen them all up on the town website. And if you could. and if you could go back to the plan, the overhead one with the measurements that you had shown before, with the newer measurements, the latest copy of that plan, yep, that's the one. Over where, over where it says the 101-5, 101 feet, 5 inches, that is to the transformer itself, am I correct?
That's the transformer itself. This is to the start of the electrical equipment.
Yep.
So they made it clear to put the transformer all the way in back.
That's what I wanted to be sure of, so that you know as well. We had asked for it to be back as far as it can, and you've very well met what we were all asking for, was to be back as far as possible, and you're within the 100 feet, which is even better. So, and I read all the, on the Eaton transformer, all the decibel ratings, where it would be at 100 feet, like you said, it's like conversation in a room, being that far back, that's closer to 200 feet from our house now, very comfortable for us, I believe, if, if everyone agrees. And the, the rest of it at 58 feet is fine with us, we're okay with that, that's, as you can see on there, it's switching, it's safety things for, you know, safety shut-offs for the electrical panels, meters, things like that, none of that makes any noise, so I think, I speak for myself and possibly, hopefully, the rest of us, that I believe that they've met what we were looking for, and we're happy to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anybody that he does not speak for and would like to, or, or just echo what he said, and again, if, if, if you can just use the microphone again and introduce yourself, name and address.
And be sure to address the chair.
Yep, Bill Collin-Tony, 247 Foundry, right across the street from this, thank you very much for taking into consideration the historical values of the House and what we, the feedback from the last one, this is a much better plan for us anyways, you know, being directly across from this, so I just want to say thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I know, that doesn't sound good.
Before we, is there anything you want to add before we close the, the hearing, or entertain a vote to close the hearing?
Hey, I, no, I really appreciate everybody's input, and I just think that's a good example of where, you know, these collaborations really, you know, something to the benefit of these projects and making them turn out better, so genuinely appreciate all your feedback and, you know, helping us make sure this project fits well for Eastern and the school.
Anybody want to make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Made by Mr. McCall. Seconded by Mr. Marlin. Any discussion, all in favor? Five-nothing? Anybody want to make a motion on this one, or...
Move we approve.
Motion made to approve by Mr. Marlin. Seconded by Mr. McCall. As amended by the, the plan submitted tonight, correct?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. McCall, any discussion? All those in favor? Five-nothing, congratulations. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Sign, make sure you voted on this one.
He's all ready to vote, no. Guys back 100 feet, I'm like, I don't even know if we can vote.
So we had to come back and...
A little more discussion, okay.
Just as in, once you went back over 100 feet, if the other portion of the project...
Say that again?
If the other portion of the project wasn't in there and it was over 100 feet, he wouldn't even be here.
If it was just this corner, and they moved it back, they wouldn't have been here, except that the transformer, I don't know if the equipment needs to be within, outside of that 100-foot, foot setback, so that may have been an issue.
He's 120 feet back.
Can I, can I, can I ask, can I ask you guys just to go out in the hall, please? We, we have another hearing, we need to...
Move down the hallway, Joe, please.
Thank you. Anyways, so, Ryan, you're up.
Getting back to 19-5, Raven Realty. Okay, who wants to start the discussion?
I'll start.
How about it, sir?
So, I see a private way that is plowed by the Ferroni family. I see that the building department and Board of Health...
Yes, please.
You can't close it because of meeting law.
Yeah, we can't, we can't close the door, but if you want to, if you, if you want to ask them, just to... Thanks.
So, I see, again, a private way that's plowed by the owners of this property. I see recommendations from the building department and Board of Health with conditions, so they're not going to give out building permits unless their conditions are met. I see that on the back, we have the same owner, even though it's a separate lot, so that 15 feet doesn't overly concern me, and then we have 15.2 feet on the west side, that they're seeking a variance to a lot which they, Ferroni family owns in a different name. So I, I'm okay with it, so when the time comes, I'm going to vote to approve. I'll make a motion to approve, actually.
All right, so you're making a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, hit. Do you have a motion on the floor, or anybody want to second that?
You still get discussion.
You've made a motion?
Yeah, no, no, after the motion's made, they can still discuss.
Yeah, okay.
Seconded.
Nope, sorry. Okay, so, a motion to approve of Mr. Merlin, seconded by Mr. Watson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Five-nothing?
Signed.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, attorney Matthews.
No, no conditions.
Oh, yeah, who wants to make a motion, we have any...
No, 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 we got, we got two, two quick things, so we have meetings to approve from the April 23rd, 2019 meeting.
Okay, and then I'll be...
Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns, changes?
Move we approve the minutes?
Nope.
Motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Watson, seconded by...
Mr. Curran.
Mr. Curran. All those in favor? Five-nothing, congratulations.
Wanted to make sure I did a...
All right. The next thing we have on the, is the, I think we have two members, is it Mr. Marlin and, no, Mr. Curran?
Mr. Curran, sir.
Mr. Curran and Mr. Watson coming up in June?
Mr. Watson's on a alternate, which is a two-year thing.
Correct.
His two years are up, Mr. Curran was filling a vacancy...
For somebody.
For Paul, I believe.
Was it Paul's, okay.
So he's eligible for reappointment for five, anyone that wants to do that, the stuff's online, how you reapply, if you don't want to, then it's good to let them know as well.
So you don't have to make a decision tonight, but just wanted to make sure you guys were both aware that you're coming up, and we'd love to have you stay with the band, so.
The supposed deadline for applying is either May 31st or June 1st.
I believe it's the end of the month, yeah, yeah.
And you're just filling in online like you did when you were doing it?
So, all right.
I can't leave you guys, what would happen?
I don't know.
What would you do without me?
I don't know.
What do we do with you?
You'd never make it.
All right, so that, that's it, so somebody want to make a motion to close?
The most.
So moved by Mr. Cook, seconded by everyone, all those in favor?